Kind of policy where we're doing a compaction test and we're not eyeballing it.
Okay. So, could you work on that policy and bring it to us? Almecadala.
Here's an item for either this committee or Public Health and Safety. It was brought to our attention this evening that there's a deaf child living on Oak. Do we have a signed standard that we can put up for that?
We could put one up.
Okay.
We could get that up. Almecardala, did you have your hand up? Okay. So, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Before we start the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee, we'll take a five-minute recess. Everybody can stretch their legs and anybody who's not interested in the rest of the agenda...
I have an answer on one.
She's in the cooking hole there.
Alright, I will call to order the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee meeting of October 8th, 2009. Will the minute taker please reflect all same members present? And I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the September 10th meeting. Is there a second? Alright, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. First issue to discuss this evening is a report and recommendation on case number 09-V3, Wooddale Bowl at 155 West Irving Park Road. This is the request for a front yard variation. Mr. Malone has submitted some color renderings. I, along with the mayor and our city manager, had a brief conversation with Mr. Malone last week to discuss some possible alterations to the design. And basically, I'll start with my opinion and then move on to anything anybody else has to add. And I'm sure there might be some questions for Mr. Malone, so at that point, we'll ask you to take the podium. I have a couple of concerns. I think one appears to have been addressed, at least in concept. First, let me remind everybody that this variance request is only a front yard variance request. And it has to do entirely with the B4 zoning district's requirement that all sidewalks be 12 feet wide, or at least 12 feet be left of a right-of-way for a future sidewalk, that no new construction occurs within that designated area. So, any discussion we have about the aesthetics of the building are, at this point, recommendations, possibly strong recommendations, might even be approval conditions, but that we will and should not base any decision whether to approve or deny based on aesthetics, because this is not an architectural review committee. With that being said, and on the issue of the sidewalk, I'm a firm believer that the B4 zoning district was drawn up properly and that a 12-foot sidewalk is a key component of a pedestrian-oriented development. With that in mind, the bowling alley probably is not as pedestrian-oriented of a facility as would be ideal in the B4 zoning district. Where I'm going with this is personally, I would be willing to accept something less than a 12-foot sidewalk, but certainly more than a 5-foot sidewalk. And it looks like in these renderings, there's a small strip of grass between the sidewalk and the proposed patio wall, perhaps at the tune of two feet or so. I'll ask Mr. Malone that in a couple of minutes. So, that's one thing. I'm looking for a compromise between the 5-foot and the 12-foot. Second, aesthetically, I've got a serious concern about the... What started out as a great concept of continuing this horizontal line of the Mancered Roof on the east portion of the building, which is a shingled Mancered Roof section, continuing that to the west end of the building, I think, great idea. But the fact that it appears from these drawings, as well as information ascertained from Mr. Malone's discussion with us previously, that roof material will not be continued, but that it'll be a canvas material, similar, if not the same, as the center-covered patio area. So, that's, you know, an aesthetic problem for me. And depending on where we go with this tonight, would certainly be a condition I would want to add to any approval. That being said, would anybody up here like to pick up the conversation and discuss their concerns? Anything they like about this, don't like, and want to take it someplace? Alderman Lewitin had your hand up first.
Two comments. First comment is that if he is going to be conciliatory on the footage of the sidewalk, I would be conciliatory on accepting that as a positive step. And when he goes to the podium, let us get the answer to that question, if that drawing is actual to scale, or if it's just a rendering. And the other thing, the second one, is as I look at these renderings, these beautiful three-dimensional renderings, I wonder what happened to your stairs that go down to the basement, which I was concerned is a possible site of an accident. They're gone. It's completely eliminated from here. Are you going to eliminate... Was that it over there? Oh, it's all the way farther. Okay. Well, then I'll just ask you, what are you doing to make sure that nobody becomes a victim of a trip and fall to the basement?
Mr. Malone, I may as well just have you take the podium now, because I got a feeling that a lot of the comments are going to be in the form of a question that you'll be able to easily answer. Thank you.
Well, first of all, the stairway is not inside the patio area that we're talking about, so if there was a trip and fall hazard there, it's there now. But I don't think there is. And as regards to the 2-foot, after the discussion, I don't see that I have the votes for not having the 2-foot, so that's why the concession was made, so...
Is that 2 feet that you're proposing right now? So, you're looking at a 13-foot...
The one end of it'll end up a little over 13-foot. The other end'll end up, because the building comes out different, it'll end up almost 14-foot on the east side of it. But when I laid it out with tables, it didn't make much difference. It makes it narrower and the aisles aren't as big, but it's still possible to do what I want to do, so...
Okay, thank you. Alderman Coles?
We put Mike through quite a speech last time for two hours, and I think everybody now has seen the plans, have quizzed him enough. I think we should just make a motion. He will put in temporary... You are going to put in a temporary kitchen eventually. Not a temporary, but I mean a kitchen.
It'll be a kitchen.
Alright, it'll be a kitchen. Excuse me. You'll be putting in a kitchen, and you will follow...
It's either all or nothing. I'm not doing half of the plan. I'm doing all of it or I'm doing none of it.
Alright. So, you're doing all of it, and you're going to have it all done. And I think that we should, instead of giving him this two, three hours of hard labor that he went through last year, we should make a motion to... I mean, last month or month and a half ago, we should make a motion that we accept his, all his variations, and that the building department is okay with it. Are you okay with it, John?
Well, we actually haven't done any plan reviews yet. I don't think we've gotten to that point.
Oh, you haven't got the plan... Well...
No.
Then how can we make a motion then?
Well, you can make a motion to the plans.
To the plans, alright. I'm making it to the plans. Do I have a second?
Second.
And the question, Alderman, police?
Couple of questions, real quick. The motion is, is the motion to grant the variance on the condition of the final plans, which include the kitchen and the awning and everything? Is that what the motion is, or is it just...
Yes.
What the motion is.
Okay, because it wasn't...
Upon final approval of plans showing the kitchen and everything's going to be done at the same time.
Motioner agrees that that was your intent?
That's my intent. Who's a second?
It was my understanding that that's what he meant, because he said...
That's what my understanding was, because he had talked to John and asked John if they were approved, and John said that they hadn't been brought before him. So, then Alderman Coles said, then why do you have to make it to the plans? And so, that was my understanding, and I thought Joe was quite clear about that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because I know we had a vote last year. I still don't see the expansion on that other project that we consolidated. So, that's why I just want to make sure we're... But before the meeting, I talked about the wall in the front, instead of the guardrail, which I don't like. I prefer the wall. And Ross, you said it was two feet. I mean, it's like a foundation wall, but I'm looking at the plans. I don't know if I'm looking at it right. It looks like 1 foot 8. Is that still the standard for the guardrail? Or is it...
Do you think that the wall be built to the height of IDOT standard guardrail?
So, this original might be...
Might need to be...
It's wrong. Okay, so it's going to be a 2-foot wall, or whatever the IDOT standard... I'm just, safety reasons, that's my biggest concern, because I know he's going below the frost line, so it's going to be, it's going to be built into the ground. Okay.
Anything from this end of the table? Alderman E. Wesley?
I will say that, hopefully this passes tonight, and I take my head off to Almecadala to try to work out an agreement to get this finalized finally, so... And I respect your decision to make the changes that we are asking to. So, I agree. I think we should approve it. We met. He gave up a little. I think it's time to approve it.
Alderman C. Winger?
Mr. Forrest, or Mr. Clicker, the proposed area of the 2-foot wall, how far is that from where the street is? How many feet?
He's going to have to sprout. I would say, this is an estimate on it, but I would say it's approximately 15 feet.
15 feet from the street?
Yes.
And eventually, should we want to widen the sidewalk, how many total... How many feet now is the sidewalk width, and how many could we go to?
This current sidewalk is 5 feet wide. With Mr. Malone pulling the patio in the 2 feet there, the sidewalk could be expanded to 7 with no difficulty. If the sidewalk, if it were to be desired to be widened to 12, there would have to be some relocation of utilities and that nature.
Okay, and 12 is what the B4 is, is that correct?
Correct.
But we can get to 7 in this stretch?
Correct.
With ease?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Shawkey?
Yeah, on the drawings you have here, is that a 7-foot sidewalk?
No, it's not. It's your current 5-foot sidewalk. I'm not replacing the sidewalk.
Okay, so the sidewalk...
It's just leaving room for you to replace the sidewalk at some time when you're prone to do that, or when there's a project to redo the road.
Now, you say the street is 15-foot?
The proposed wall, according to these drawings, the proposed wall would be approximately 15 feet from the curb line.
15-foot, so we have, what, approximately 2 feet of grass and shrubbery?
Correct.
And how wide is the sidewalk?
5-foot.
Still 5-foot?
Yes.
And then we'd have 6-foot?
6 to 7 feet.
9.
Approximately.
Can you quickly, not to take all evening, tell me why you came to us with B4?
The B4 district, the intent of it is to create a pedestrian-friendly, transit-oriented development district. The district boundaries that were established by that, quite honestly, were not the ones that were originally proposed. Those were what came about through the hearings and through the changes that both the zoning board and the council made. But the intent of the B4 district is to create a pedestrian-friendly, transit-oriented development district. And a transit-oriented development district is generally within a half-mile of a transit station.
And is that within a half-mile?
It is right on the edge of the half-mile.
Okay, so it does include, it is included in the B4?
Yes.
Okay. The first thing that came through talked about needing it for non-smoking. Is that correct? Is that still the case?
I believe that's, one of the main intents was that Mr. Malone wanted a place for his smokers to be able to...
Can you tell me the definition of unique?
Definition of unique would be something that is unusual or to the individual property.
No, it's being the only one of its kind. That's the actual dictionary definition. The only one of its kind. So, it's, our rules or our B4 district says that it has to be unique?
Correct.
How is this unique? If it's the only...
Again, the rules and regulations specify that there are certain requirements that are met. There are standards for a variation. One of them is that the property needs to be unique. The standards are used by the zoning board and by the council to determine whether or not a hardship has been, means have been met for a variation to be granted.
The hardship is smoking, and that's unique?
Again, that's not my determination. That's, the information is presented for the council, or the zoning board and the council to make their determination if the standards have been met.
That's what troubles me. It sounds like it's being made up by you, and you're working for the city, but it sounds like you're working for the person asking for the variation.
No, sir. My job in this role is to take the application and present it to the zoning board for their, for the zoning board for their hearing. The zoning board then makes a determination whether or not they felt that the standards for a variation have been met, and they take a vote to recommend yes or no. In this case, they voted 4 to 3 to recommend approval. That recommendation is then to be used as a guide for the council to then further determine if they believe that the standards for variation have been met and the ordinance can be drafted.
And through the zoning committee, in which the second round was told one thing and it wasn't, it's just that the whole thing has been, I think on your part, a disaster. I really do. Mike, I think you said already that if you can't have this, you're not going to do anything.
It's probably, if it goes any narrower than that, it's not worth it for me to do anything.
In other words, you wouldn't try and fix up the front, or, well, I can't get into that, can I? Because that's architectural.
I think it's a, you know, I think it's a good question that if Mr. Malone wants to answer, that's perfectly fine, but if he doesn't, we certainly can't push him into answering it, so... Please ask your question, Alderman Shawkey.
That's it. If we did, if the council did turn you down, would you still redo the front of your bowling alley?
I think that when you do a major improvement to an existing business, the balance ends up being income versus what you can do. And there's no income, there's no way to spend that money to do that.
So, what you're saying is that because of the statewide anti-smoking thing, you're losing business?
It's, it's, business is down, period. This is a way to generate new business. It's using people in the community to build it, which also spends money in the community, and it's, and it also beautifies the building. And that's what it is. I mean, you could get hung up on the no-smoking thing if you want to, but I don't know. You look at it differently than I do, apparently.
Thank you. Alderman Coles, and then I have a comment.
I have one thing to say to Mr. Shawkey. Not criticizing you or anything like that, but bowling alleys, there's several bowling alleys that had to close up, and I would hate to see Wooddale Bowl close up, because a lot of people use Wooddale Bowl, and he does use them for parties for kids that have birthdays. And factories around here have outings in his bowling alley. And I'll tell you, to have another empty building on Irving Park, especially as big as his, would be really kind of sad in the city of Wooddale. I'm sorry, that's my opinion. Thank you.
So, you're saying that he would go out of business if he doesn't have this?
He might.
I'm not saying that.
He's not saying that. I says, he might. There's Shilla Bowl went out, River Grove Bowl went out, and a couple of the bowling alleys went out, because there's no people going in leagues anymore. So, things are getting tighter. People ain't got the money to spend to go bowling. So, I mean, it's a tough game. It's like anything else, it's a tough game now.
Okay, we've spent so much time on this, as much as I think we all want to move on and see where we're all at with this, there still needs to be just a bit more conversation. There's too many lessons to be learned from this entire situation, starting with the beginning. And I think this is the first lesson learned, and I think staff has already amended it. Ross Clicker, our staff did not have any, anything in writing, basically, you know, that allowed him the responsibility and authority to turn Mr. Malone's initial request with the lack of drawings away. As much as Ross would have liked more, and I'm sure he would have, and I know I would have liked more, he didn't have anything in any city ordinance allowing him to turn it down. I think that's been amended. Is that correct, Mr. Clicker? Or is in the process of...
...has been given as to what is expected for the presentation to the zoning board? Yes.
Okay, that's the first thing. Second, to address Alderman Shawkey's concern about the variation standards review, seven items in that standards review, correct, Mr. Clicker?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The mandate of the Zoning Board of Appeals is to base their decision based on and only on those seven criteria given to them. And in my strong opinion, that did not happen. That is, that did not happen. Alderman Shawkey brings up a good point about uniqueness and the way, you know, it's used in our ordinance, along with some other things. And particularly, the last ZBA meeting, I was very upset with the way that happened. And there's a lesson that needs to be learned here. This is a bigger picture item, and I don't want to dwell on it anymore this evening, but ZBA needs to base their opinion on that. The council, however, it's my understanding, that we take the ZBA's recommendation, which should be based solely on fact, and now we can use that finding of fact that they determined, and use that in conjunction with anything else that we feel is appropriate to either, certainly to find a reason to grant a variance. We can't sit up here and say, "The building still isn't pretty enough, we won't grant your variance." But we can say, "We want a 12-foot sidewalk. However, if you give something back to the community by making the building more attractive, we'll consider finding a happy medium," which is, I think, what's going on here today. You good? So, I think, I think we do have some leeway to make a decision based on a different set of criteria than the ZBA does. And that is, and that is where I'm going next. Back to Alderman Coles' original motion. I think on a point of procedure, it would be inappropriate, in so much as we are not an architectural review committee, that we need to make the motion very simple, that we approve the variance. We need to make it very specific, that we approve it for the discussed amended allowance for a 12-foot sidewalk such, I mean, a 7-foot sidewalk. Okay, it's, okay, so, but I want this to be very clear, because we discussed the fact that the building is running out of square with the sidewalk. This, that we can accommodate a 7-foot sidewalk in the future with no physical obstruction from new construction, in such a manner that the southern edge of the sidewalk, the edge closest to Irving Park Road, does not have to move further south. Bottom line is, that grass park way between the sidewalk and the Irving Park Road curb stays the same. The full 7 feet is accommodated north of that point. So, I think that is the, that is the physical condition we're looking at here. As far as the inclusion of the kitchen, I don't know that at committee level it's appropriate to put that in the motion, however, at council, it must be discussed. However, I would like to list it as an approval condition. Okay, so, I don't know exactly how that, you know, works legally with the motion, but as a side note, it's an approval condition. Additional approval condition is that this crash wall, I will call it, meets IDOT standards as far as impact resistance and height. Additionally, and we may need to take a mini-vote on this to make sure that this is consensus, once again, we cannot deny based solely on aesthetics, but we can approve based on aesthetics in conjunction with the project's inherent factors itself. I'm really still having a problem with these two different materials of roof. The shingles off to the east and the canvas off to the left. I would really like to make a quick roll call here and see if a majority of the council agrees that yet another approval condition be that this roof material, I'm excluding the center section, this main covered area, that is going to extend approximately 13 feet. I'm talking about these small 2-, 3-foot-tall Mancered Roof sections on the far wings of the building, that they be of the same material, be it continue the shingles all the way across to the west, or carry the canvas, be it over the old roof or a new structure, whatever it takes. So, that aesthetically, you know, that brings the building up to a level of visual appeal such to, for me personally, to such a degree that I am willing to compromise on that sidewalk and live with the 7-foot sidewalk. So, if anybody has any strong objections to that last one, I'd like to hear that now, otherwise, I'd really like that to be included. I'm saying it's a, I'm saying that it's an approval condition, so...
Again, you're talking...
And we have, and we have until next Thursday for an attorney's ruling on the appropriateness of that, but it is my understanding that we can, we can set approval conditions on this motion. And I don't think that that's, that that's, you know, unreasonable. Does anybody think that that's unreasonable? Alderman, police?
I'm very familiar with conditions on approval. I think the attorney's going to be fine with that. Again, you know, this, we're granting the variance. If we were just granting the variance as is, I tell you right now, I'm a no, because I don't want that to become a smoking thing. But I'm hearing that there's going to be a kitchen, it's going to be food served. I know it's not a cafe, and I know it's not going to turn into an outdoor cafe, but it's adding to the business, adding to the aesthetics of the building. I'll switch my vote to a yes. If we're strictly talking about this, no.
This evening, we're trying to get a consensus between all of us. Obviously, attorney has final say as to whether or not what we're trying to do here is appropriate.
Could I ask Mr. Malone a question?
Please.
Mr. Malone, what they are looking for, if I am mistaken, they're looking for you to take that canvas, or whatever that is, to go for far end of the building where the brown shingles are. Are you considering doing that down the line? Or were you talking about, or were these drawings drawn up before conversation?
The one is an awning, the other one is a, is a Mancered Roof, and...
This is an awning here, I take it?
It's an awning, yeah. So, this is an awning. It may be easier to put the Mancered Roof all the way across and then just have an awning. I don't know, I have to, I have to get that estimated, because that isn't how I looked at it, but... But that Mancer Roof does not just go on the front of the building, it goes down the side. It goes all the way almost to the back of the building, so...
Yeah.
So, whatever I did in the front, I'd have to do to that, so...
Well, I'm, I...
So, you're adding another 150 feet to it.
I don't want to redesign this whole thing on you, but I'm not, I'm not asking you to go down the other side, and I don't think anybody else is. I'm trying to, no, you don't have to. There's no reason that it has to wrap. It could be the exact same detail as this, but done in shingles. Alderman Winger?
I think the point is, we're looking for consistency in the front, because that's what shows on Irving Park Road. So, whether it is Mancered on the left and right, and then the awning in the middle, I imagine that would be okay too, or the awning all the way across in the front, but just something that's consistent. Thank you.
Okay, if no other comments, I am going to want to take a, oh, the motioner, does the motioner agree to...
The motioner agrees.
Okay, to what we're all discussing here, and does the seconder?
Yes.
Okay, then let's please take a roll call. I'm sorry, before we roll, last question.
What's the motion on the floor? Because we added all the stuff. Now, what is the motion on the floor?
The motion is a front yard setback variance of 5 feet, in simplest terms of 5 feet. But I do want it... But I do want it spelled out very specifically in the, in the legal version of this, that it will allow for a 7-foot sidewalk without altering the southern edge of the sidewalk. That is the motion in and of itself. We have three approval conditions attached to it. One, that the kitchen becomes part of the project when Mr. Malone goes for full permitting and construction. One is that this wall meets I dot standards. And the other is that some design alteration is made such that the mancered roof and the canvas roof, uh, that, that we just use one or the other. Or that Mr. Malone just uses one or the other on either side of the center section.
Alderman Shawkey. Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Cadella.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you. We'll take it from here. Next, item, uh, number five, report and recommendation. Request for payment in the amount of $85,000 from Hucksdorf Incorporated for demolition of both 110 and 136 Commercial. Mr. Forrest, I did a lot of talking. Would you mind taking over from here?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, it's a simple pay request. Uh, we had allocated the $100,000. There were a couple of environmental testing companies and removal. In fact, there is one invoice on here that, uh, should be coming through and bills payable also for the Phase Ones. But that will still leave us a positive balance of the money allocated. Hucksdorf's original contract was for 85,000. They've completed the work. We're now stockpiling soil on that site. That's my understanding that, uh, they have been retained, uh, to also work on that site to spread out the soil as part of our, uh, process for that soil to remediate itself. Any questions?
Alderman Wesley.
I will tell you that this company did excellent job tearing down these buildings. I mean, I cannot say enough of this company. They did everything we asked to do. They now working with the, our other issue that's going on in, in our town. This is a good company to work with. I would recommend them, again, for any demolition projects that we have in town again. They were outstanding.
He was a good contractor to work with. Uh, there was some unanticipated issues out at the site that, uh, you know, he just dug right in and took care of it. There's about 70% more concrete in one of those buildings than he had anticipated because he discovered when he started tearing down 136 Commercial that most of the building had a double floor slab in it. And the foundations could probably have supported about a six-story building. So that was his surprise on the project. Just as a quick aside, I did have the building scrapped before he started on it. So the city did make a couple thousand dollars that went into the general fund from recycling the copper and brass that was in that building, so... I think we're in pretty good shape on this project.
Okay, well, thank you. With no other hands up, I will make a motion to approve payment in the amount of $85,000 to Hucksdorf Incorporated.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, motion carries. Item number six is a report and recommendation on a lease agreement with Christie's for the coffee vending service at the new Metro Station. Uh, we've all had an opportunity to read through this. I will just go ahead and make the motion, ask for a second, and then call the question if there is any. So a motion to approve the lease agreement with Christie's, um, for the coffee vending service.
Second.
And, uh, Mr. Forrest, do you have anything to add? Or shall we just go ahead and take the roll call?
Take the roll.
Okay, well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carries. Next item, report and recommendation, Metro Train Station Change Order Number Five. John, please walk us through this.
All right, Change Order Number Five, uh, as I noted in the memo, occurred because due to the lapse of time from when the original electrical drawings were prepared, excuse me, by the architect's consultant, to the time when it came to order the fixtures, the fixtures that were specified are no longer available through the supplier. Uh, we were able to find very similar fixtures. Of course, there is an increased cost on that. I will tell you that this original, that this change order did come in substantially higher through subsequent meetings with the architect and the subcontractors and the supplier. We managed to whittle it down to this amount. To be honest with you, everybody who's involved in the project, the supply house, the subcontractor, the general contractor, everybody's, uh, putting in for a bit of this change order. This would be the city's share.
Is this change order directly with the general contractor or directly with the electrical contractor?
This is with the electrical contractor who's buying the fixtures.
Okay, so we're paying them directly. We've saved a couple of dollars by not having a markup through the GC on this one as well.
Correct, yes.
Okay, motion to approve Change Order Number Five for $523.48 for lighting. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed, none, motion carries. The next item is report and recommendation, Metro Train, Train Station Change Order Number Six. John Forrest, you're on again.
Thank you. Well, again, as, as I mentioned in the memo initially during the planning phases, and I really don't have a definite reason why, we figured we would put paper towel holders in there for... It seemed like a good idea at the time.
I think it was a very bad idea.
It seemed like a cost-saving measure.
It saves on plumbing, whatever this change order is, so I'd make a motion we approve.
Exactly. I mean, you go, when you sit back and look at it, I mean, the, the problems going with paper towels or, or paper towel dispensers for hand drying is kinda silly, so...
Save us on plumbing, so go ahead.
Exactly.
So it's another one of those self-explanatory situations. I will make a motion to approve Change Order Number Six in the amount of $1,687.40 for hand dryers.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carries. If I'm not missing anything, it looks like we're on to items to be considered at future meetings. And, well, all I have on the list at this point in time is the Land Vision Unified Development Ordinance. Mr. Clicker, you're waving your hand? Or is it a nervous twitch?
No, no.
Because I got one of those now.
Uh, we will be bringing before the committee, uh, the implementation strategies from Lakota and SB Friedman and Trant Systems for the Thorndale Corridor. We would like to do that at the next committee meeting.
I would appreciate that. That is good. Real quick, on the Land Vision UDO, I know it's tough for you to guesstimate this, Ross, but any idea how much longer it might take as ZBA to get through it based on...